City Council meeting, now I gotta call you back.
Almost loading. All right, and we are ready to begin.
Okay, I am now calling to order this regular city council meeting of the Oak Park City Council, December 7th, 2020 at 7:01 PM. Uh, City Clerk Ed Norris, would you call the roll?
Mayor McClellan.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Burns.
Here.
Councilmember Radner. I thought he was here. Councilmember Weiss.
Here.
And Councilmember Edgar.
Here.
Here we have a quorum. Um, next, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Burns.
Seconded.
Thank you. Edgar, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, motion carried. Next, we have item four is the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Yes ma'am.
I'd like to poll one item from the consent agenda, please.
Yes.
Uh, item A.
A, okay, we will uh, deal with item A as a separate item. Consent agenda are presented without discussion as a single item. So we have item B, special council meeting minutes of November 10th, 2020 and November 16th, 2020, and request to approve payment application number two for the 2020 miscellaneous concrete project M 714 to Mattioli Cement Company of Fenton, Michigan for the amount of $132,827.97. I made a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Seconded.
So the Weiss.
Yeah, made and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carried, going back to item A. Regular city council meetings of November 10th, 2020 and November 16th, 2020. City Councilmember Regina Weiss. Well firstly, I guess we need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Okay, um, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, and um, Councilmember Weiss, you had some corrections or additions?
There was uh, one correction on the minutes from the uh, November 10th minutes. Um, it was for item. Make sure I got it right, the um, resolution to approve an obsolete property rehabilitation act application.
Yes.
Um, the vote record read that um, I was a yes vote, but I was in fact a no vote on that, so I just wanted to correct that.
Thank you, stands corrected, um, so all those in favor of approving the minutes as corrected, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same time? That um, passes. Are there any elected officials, this is where we sometimes have um, someone from the Oakland County Commission speak, or sometimes our state rep will speak. Anybody, anyone here? Okay, there's no, uh, that puts us down to item 10. Counting records, approval for payment of an invoice submitted by Howard L. Schiffman PC for legal services retainer for January 1st to March 31st, 2021, in the total amount of $18,000, need a motion to approve payment.
So moved.
Okay, Burns. Radner. Roll call, please.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Burns.
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar.
Yes.
Mayor McClellan.
Yes.
Councilmember Radner.
Yes.
And Councilmember Weiss.
Yes.
Motion carried, um, there is um, uh, nothing from, uh, for ordinances or city attorney, which brings us to item 14, city manager, Eric Tongate.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council, I would like to ask Director Van Vleck to take 14A for me, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, um, first of all, I'm going to apologize, um, what's on the agenda is incorrect, as I, as the agenda item that I sent to the clerk's office had the wrong title to it, um, you guys have actually already approved, um, you've already approved the appointment of the, of those that you see on the, on the agenda right now. So I actually have four new members, um, that we're asking for your approval for, so I'll get to them in one second, um, but just a quick summary, as I think you guys are all aware, the Oakland County Youth Assistance Program is administered through the Oakland County Circuit Court Family Division, and it consists of local youth assistance offices in Oakland County communities through tri-sponsorship agreements between the circuit court, the local municipalities, and the local school districts. The Oak Park Youth Assistance Program was created in 1983 by the Oakland County Circuit Court, and it includes the following sponsors, the city of Oak Park, the Oak Park School District, and the Charter Township of Royal Oak. Membership eligibility includes civic leaders, organizational gov- and government people, professional people, and individuals who are interested in serving youth in the area covered by the city of Oak Park and the Oak Park School District. After new members are approved by the Oak Park Youth Assistance Board, they must then be presented to each of the local sponsors for approval. Upon acceptance by the local sponsors, they must then be sent to the Oakland County Circuit Court judges for final approval and formal appointment to the board. So today, um, I'd like to ask you all for final approval of four members, or four new board members. They include Jamie Powell Horowitz, who I believe you all know was just elected judge to the 45th District Court, she's been volunteering for um, youth assistance now for several months, and has been very helpful, and is also a member of the Friends of the Oak Park Library. We're also asking for appointment of Ben Vineberg, um, he's a longtime Oak Park resident, and he's been passionate about Oak Park youth for some time now, you may know that he recently ran for the Oak Park School Board, and he sat on the board of the Tri-Community Coalition for years. The third person is Carl Dade, he is a social worker for Oak Park Schools at the Freshman Institute, and he's worked closely with our caseworker, referring students for many, many years now. And lastly, we have Leslie Ritchie, who I think you all know, she's a lifelong Oak Park resident, she is a member of the Friends of the Oak Park Library, and she has been an incredibly valuable um, volunteer for youth assistance now for several months, and she actually spearheaded one of our, um, she actually spearheaded a fundraiser over the summer, which we could not have done without her, so those are the four appointments that we're asking for your final approval on.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, we need a motion to approve the appointment of Jamie Powell Horowitz, Ben Vineberg, Carl Dade, and Leslie Ritchie to the Oak Park Youth Assistance Board.
So moved.
You, Mayor Pro Tem, second, Radner, thank you, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried, welcome to the board, everyone, thank you for volunteering to help our kids.
Okay, thank you, councilmembers, 14B, Assistant City Manager Kevin Yee is here, Kevin, take it away.
Thank you, good evening. Uh, attaches a cost-sharing agreement with the Michigan Department of Transportation for the 2021 Safe Routes to School project. The city has been working with OHM advisors on plans and submittals for a safe routes to school project that includes sidewalk ramp and additions and improvements, additions of a median island and hawk signal at Ten Mile and Hoover Si, as well as the addition of a left turn phase at Ten Mile Road and Church. The city has made it through the fund obligation process and MDOT included the city's project in the November building and received three bids. The lowest came in at $564,936.12. The attached agreement is the final step of the process before construction, and the city agrees to pay 100% of the cost greater than the grant amount of $464,321. So, um, the expenditure is budgeted, I, in the major street fund, and is recommended that city council approve the attached agreement and authorize city manager Eric Tongate to sign it on behalf of the city.
Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Thank you. Who is the second?
Radner.
Radner, thank you. Um, uh, questions, what hawk signal?
Hawk signal is a pedestrian lighted signal. So it's just a pedestrian only, I'm sorry?
Walk, no walk, that kind of?
Correct, it stops, it like, links to notify traffic that someone is crossing the street. So it's for pedestrians that are crossing the street, and it's mid-block, so it's not like where there's an intersection where traffic, vehicle traffic's going through, it's only for pedestrians.
And what is on Ten and Church again?
Um, well, it's a safe routes to school, so it's intended for um, children that are going back and forth across Ten Mile Road and in that area to safely be able to navigate across Ten Mile Road and get to school.
Well, there is a light there now, so we're putting in additional?
At, at Ten and Church, we're gonna add a left turn phase, um, traffic backs up, making left turns, and we wanted to be able to get traffic through and um, not really kind of prevent people from making that last ditch effort to make a left turn um, through the red, so I, it's safer to let them go through on a signalized green, green arrow, and um, then in mid-block, in more towards Hoover Si, there's going to be an island put in. Um, oh, look at that.
There we go.
Thank you. Um, so there's gonna be an island put in, um, as you can see in the example there, the hawk signal is up on the, the top right photo, that's a hawk signal, so it's, it's only intended, like I said, for pedestrian traffic, it notifies you, um, traffic when to stop, because it's a pedestrian crossing, the island is something similar to what is shown in the middle, and uh, on the bottom is kind of a, on each side is gonna be flashing pedestrian.
Weiss.
And that's at Lincoln and Marlowe, I'm sorry, that, that flashing one is gonna be at Lincoln and Marlowe.
Kevin, uh, if I could just chime in, Kevin, this was, this was a, obviously, a combined effort with the school, uh, over there, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and Madam Mayor, members of council, I just wanted to add, this was um, harkening all the way back to, gosh, last year, when we um, sort of walked that area and determined these, these schoolchildren were walking in these areas that were deemed unsafe, so I could not be more thrilled about what Director Barrett and, and Assistant City Manager Yee and the team have come up with here, not only is it a huge aesthetic improvement, improvement, it's also improved safety tenfold, in my opinion.
Yeah, we think it's a great project, and, and like you had mentioned, um, you know, Director Barrett and Assistant City Manager Jenkins have worked extensively on getting this uh, project put together, as has Director Cooper and, and many others have worked on going through this.
The school itself, too.
Right, correct, and, and the school itself, absolutely, we needed to be partners with them in order to get this grant.
So Madam Mayor, just a quick question, so the city's, um, the city's uh, share is gonna be about 100,000?
Correct.
And is the si- the, is there one of those hawk sort of islands on um, the service drive at 11, like as you're heading west to get on 696? Do you know what I'm talking about, they, they just added that recently, and there's also one along Ten Mile.
These?
Um, is that what we're, we're doing, something just like that?
I'm not, I, I'm quite, I'm saying, not no park, correct, you're talking about in another, in another city?
I think they're both in Southfield.
Yeah, they're, Madam Mayor, if I could answer that, um, we toured those, Councilmember Edgar, and yes, they are similar, I think ours are a little bit better, if you will, um, but it's the, it's the same concept that you're referring to, especially the one on Ten Mile, we specifically looked at that one.
Then pedestrians will feel safer if they're crossing, and if there happens to be traffic coming, they can stop on that island, that's the idea?
Correct, it's a safe, kind of a safe haven, where, where pedestrians, as they're walking across the street, have a place to stop, um, and, you know, have a safe, safe place to stop along the, the route. And one thing, if I may add also, I do want to make sure, you know, in full disclosure, that we will also be bringing to, uh, forth a proposal from OHM for construction engineering on this project, it is a grant project, there's a lot of record-keeping for the construction engineering, so we will be bringing that forward, so you, you know, we do have that budgeted as well in a separate line item, so these are all budgeted expenses, we fully expected them, but I just wanted to, so you didn't think that that's the only expense for this project for the city, we do have, uh, the engineering portion.
Madam Mayor. Um, is this the last phase of the project, I know that there was another part, I believe, on Lincoln, um, are there any other areas that were still um, need to fund in terms of, obviously, you just mentioned the engineering costs, but in terms of the actual physical costs of construction?
No, that's the only other portion of construction, or only other portion of the project that we would be responsible for is engineering, and then this, um, uh, the amount over the grant funding.
I mean, in terms of uh, location, because didn't, wasn't there another area on Lincoln too, that we already have your funding for?
Maybe, Kevin, if I could, maybe this'll jog your memory, I think what Councilmember Weiss is referring to is when Director Barrett initially had submitted a, a strategy for this grant application, it included a wider range of improvements, some of which were much smaller improvements than this, but it did extend all the way down to Lincoln um, and other places too, so I don't know if that's, that's not part of this, but is that something that we're still thinking in the future, or?
Are you, we're, and well, first of all, we're always considering and looking at um, other ways to, especially team with the schools, because these safe routes to school grants are available, and work on ways to improve pedestrian walkability, we are looking at some things at Lincoln and Coolidge, as a matter of fact, for some improvements there on walkability, um, but um, that is not part of this particular grant. But it is something that we have talked about in the past.
And is that left turn cycle on Church and um, uh, Ten Mile, is that for both um, east and westbound traffic on um, Ten Mile and north and southbound traffic on Church? Or is it just for like Church?
Actually, I'm gonna defer to Director Barrett on which left turn signals or phasing is, is, is part of that.
Uh, Director Barrett, we need you to unmute.
Sorry about that. Um, I believe the left turn phase is just to uh, let traffic in off of Ten Mile, uh, there's really not a backup or a need that's backing anything up on Church, and the main issue with that is to, um, well, traffic's waiting for the light to change, nobody can turn left there, and meanwhile, the kids are trying to cross the street also, so there'll be a phase in there for the kids to cross the street, and then another phase in there to complete the left turns.
Thank you.
Are there further questions, are we ready to vote? We're voting to approve a cost-sharing agreement with the Michigan MDOT for 2021 Safe Routes to School and to authorize the city manager to sign on behalf of the city, is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
We, we have a motion, and we-
We have a motion, excellent, okay, so, eh, any further input? I think we're ready for voting.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Burns?
Yes.
Motion carried. We will be a safer place. Thanks to all your work, thank you.
Good job. Okay, uh, 14C, Director Maroni is here. Please tell Ernie to continue to make delicious sandwiches as much as possible.
Absolutely, good evening, everyone, um, we've received an application for facade grant improvement from Ernie's Market at 8500 Capital Avenue, the project specifications have been met except for the requirement of two quotes, um, we are asking that you um, waive that requirement for two quotes, quotes, due to COVID, it's been hard for them to get uh, two timely quotes, and they want to get this up in a timely manner because of the weather that is coming, and they have to make their customers wait outdoors. The project consists of adding an awning and wind enclosure on the south side, so that the customers can wait, um, and be out of the elements, the total cost of the project is $5,776, and the 50% grant match will not exceed the guidelines of $2,500. We are requesting that the city council approve the facade grant, um, for the 50% of the project cost in an amount not to exceed 2,500, and also to waive the requirement of two quotes.
Uh, is there a motion? Yep.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second?
Second.
Thank you. Um, Ernie and his market have been in the city of Detroit since the year of the Great Snow, when he was a kid in middle school, Ernie was delivering groceries for his mom and dad's little grocery store that was housed there, um, to everyone, and spreading cheer and, and goodwill, and um, the, the, the looks of the um, the project are, are very appealing, the black cover, yes, will, will make it easier for people to wait in line outside, and everybody's waiting in line, because if you have not been to Ernie's, you are not officially an Oak Park resident or staff member, you have to go down there and get some love from Ernie. Uh, any questions about this um, facade improvement grant? Questions? Yes, um, Regina Weiss.
Uh, I just had a question regarding, um, uh, just a concern, um, to ensure that if people are standing in the, in the enclosed area, that they're following social distance guidelines, because it seems like a pretty small area, um, I would hate for people to like cram in there to be warm, and then be spreading COVID, so um, I would just offer that as a reminder to our, and not just to, to Ernie's, but to all local businesses to make sure that um, customers are following social distancing guidelines.
Yes, and Ernie, and it, Ernie does um, regulate that and make sure that people do follow that protocol, um, he used to allow people inside of the building and standing in line, he doesn't allow that anymore, so they make sure that they strictly enforce it.
Madam Mayor, I do have one question about the project, so we require, we typically require three bids on facade improvement projects, is that correct?
No, we typically require two.
So in this case, because of COVID, it's been more difficult to, to bid out these projects, so do we know anything about Mary Grove, is it a good company, is Ernie happy with them?
Yeah, it's a good company, and yes, Ernie is very happy with them.
So we're, you're confident that they'll do good work?
Yeah, absolutely. I spoke to the contractor myself, and yeah, he has Ernie's best interest.
Good question, thank you. Uh, any further questions, are we ready to vote? Roll call, please.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Burns?
Yes.
And Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Okay, and we have Director Davis is here for 14D, please.
Yes, thank you, City Manager Tongate, and good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, and my good colleagues, um, I'm coming before you today, uh, with a request, in light of the unexpected burdens caused by the global coronavirus pandemic, the city of Oak Park has been forced to adapt in many ways to maintain open, accurate, and timely communication with stakeholders. At the city manager's request, the Communications and Public Information Department, also known as CPI, was tasked with identifying efficient and effective communication methods for delivering city council meetings, both virtually as we are now, and in a hybrid format, which accommodates meetings with limited in-person participation and simultaneous inact- interactive broadcast, this is what we will begin doing in January of 2021, once we come out of our, our shutdown. In addition, the CPI department was asked to identify other equipment essential to maintaining effective stakeholder communication while minimizing physical contact to maintain the health and safety of city staff and visitors to the municipal complex. As a result of the requested research from the city manager, the CPI department recommends the following, the purchase of a new production switcher with remote user training and 24/7 vendor tech support, also a cable cast digital signage in five locations within the municipal complex, that would be city hall, municipal services, so the community center, recreation down at that end, library and public safety, which will allow the CPI department to program and scroll consistent messaging related to instructions and program marketing on all signage players at the same time, and then also podium video source. There's a possibility that some of the suggested items may be reimbursable by Oakland County as part of the county's efforts to support municipalities during this pandemic, the county stipulates that all potentially reimbursable purchases must be completed and equipment installed and invoiced by December 17th, 2020 to qualitied, qualify for consideration. Film Tools, a production equipment vendor and past supplier of the city, is prepared to install the necessary equipment before the county's deadline, the total cost of purchase installation is $29,125, should the city of Oak Park qualify for reimbursement by the county, the county has indicated that will only reimburse for equipment for the community center and library, they may qualify, however, it is CPI, my department's uh, recommendation to the city manager and also to council, that we need these items to meet our objectives, even if they're not reimbursable, which we believe they will be, so it is recommended by, to city council, uh, that city council approve the purchase of communications equipment in the amount of $29,125, and authorize that as a fund balance expenditure.
Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Radner? And Weiss? Uh, is there discussion or questions about the purchase of this particular equipment?
Yes, I, I do have a question, or two, so what, what is, uh, what is a production switcher with remote user training?
It's a very good question, what I have done is I've invited, at the city manager's request, I've invited Film Tools, our representative, uh, John Stillson, who's on the call today, to answer all of our technical questions, so Mr. Stillson, would you help me with that, please?
Hi, thank you for uh, inviting me to the meeting, um, a production switcher is so, when you watch a meeting, uh, live, for instance, when Benny's um, operating the switcher, he switches between the, the members of the council speaking, as well as streams it live, and records the audio and video for uh, playback off the tightrope system at future dates. Uh, the new switcher is designed to take on this type of meeting and bring it into that environment and switch live, uh, the live meeting with the Zoom meeting, so it'll be a one cohesive meeting with, out of the two locations.
This is a live meeting though, right?
Yes.
So I, I still don't quite understand what the difference would be.
Well, the, the, the council chambers has four cameras, the switcher that's, there's a switcher there now, but it's went, running a older operating system and is obsoleted, so the new system, it's the same manufacturer's tightrope, uh, Tricaster, new tech, but the newer systems with the current updated software that um, is available, allows it to work with uh, Zoom and Skype, uh, and any other of the uh, online uh, meeting platforms.
And, and may I just add to that, uh, uh, Councilmember Edgar, that this is about the hybrid meetings that we would be holding, so this is so that we can be, um, at the same time have, if people want to meet with us on Zoom, uh, for council meetings, and then if we have some in-person, as in, we're in chambers and we're doing Zoom, so it's hybrid, so we can do both at the same time.
And then the second, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, no, I, I was just gonna say so, but that wouldn't be effective unless we were back having live meetings, correct? And council chambers?
Yes, yes, Mayor-
And we don't, and we don't know when that's going to occur, we could not have live meetings in the chambers until next year.
Well, the current status of the law is, that would have to start in January, that's the current law, so that's what we're preparing for, that if we have to start those in-person meetings in January, now again, I talked about, there's legislation now to push that date back to March, but the reality is that at a certain date, we are going to have to go back to in- in-person meetings under the Open Meetings Act. But there are lines, kind of a hybrid, which is why we don't have the technology currently in city council chambers to, to be able to hold that in-person meeting and also broadcast it simultaneously. And then I'm gonna step out of the technology discussion.
Thank you so much, Attorney Duff, because, uh, let me say one more thing about that. We have the technology right now, obviously, to have a meeting in person and run it on YouTube. That's not a problem. It's the interactive part that's the problem. So if we have people who want to join our meeting and actually, uh, be a part of it like they are now, um, we do not have that, that current technology to do that. So it makes it interactive for people who don't want to be in person and who would rather be on Zoom. Does that answer your question, Madam, uh, Mayor Pro Tem?
Uh, yes, I'm just trying to ascertain, what is the worst scenario, scenario? Because this is like, we're talking thirty thousand dollars. If we don't do it, what's the worst? We just continue to broadcast like we're doing now?
And I, I think that when we have to go back to live meetings and I'm saying I'm concerned because Keith has a lot of conditions that the meeting could be live, but some of us could opt to still go by Zoom. Is that correct?
That is correct, Madam Mayor.
Can I chime in as well?
Yes.
I just wanted to say something real quick. Um, we're, we're at the last lifespan of our Tricaster system, the switcher that we're currently using. And right now, the operating system is so outdated and we've reached the max, uh, firmware of trying to update it that we've lost some options like streaming. And so we could still broadcast the cable, but we can't even stream. So it's good that we have Zoom and, uh, this stream we've live that we, that we've paid for because that allows us to do the streaming option. So it's almost, uh, I don't want to say this had to happen, but it, it just reached its lifespan, you know, I guess at the perfect time, so we have to upgrade.
Madam Mayor, can I weigh in too? I, Jocelyn, I was hoping that you could expand a little bit. I know, you know, I know where Mayor Pro Tem's head is going with this and I'm with her, which is, you know, spending thirty grand out of fund balances painful. But, uh, you know, I don't know that this is a, an, a, a expense that we can not do. Um, for the reasons Benny just mentioned, but also because of the, the environment when we will get back to whatever normal is. Um, do you, my question for you, Jocelyn, and maybe you can expand is, do you see a point in time, um, where we may be able to get reimbursed for this expenditure because it is related to the pandemic?
Well, I would hope so, but it, currently, uh, the money that's being offered by the county does not include what we're doing. Now, now that doesn't, that says nothing because lot, a lot changes in a short period of time. Um, Director Van Black is actually on the call and she's the one who's our coordinator with the county. If she might, uh, chime in, uh, Madam Mayor? That's okay?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so the, we received, um, there was, there were several avenues of funding. One of those was through the county. Um, and we've received quite a bit of that already and we had met our cap. They had created, um, different, or a cap for each community. Um, in addition to that, though, they had money available specifically set aside for libraries and community centers. And so we were able to apply for, for things, for reimbursement in that category. And so that gave us the opportunity to apply for some of these costs as they, the ones that apply to the library and the community center. Um, as far as additional funding, that's TBD really.
Um, so let me, let me, so let me, that's where I wanted you to go. And I think, you know, Congress has a bill they're about to take up, hopefully. Um, the governor's calling for a hundred million dollars in funding. Um, you know, if there's an opportunity to seek reimbursement for this expenditure, you can bet that we're going to be all over it.
For sure.
Yeah, if, um, I think based on the qualifications, um, this would def, this would absolutely qualify for reimbursement in the future if there were more funds. Um, I know another thing the legislature was hoping for was an extension for the spending of those federal cares dollars. Um, they had to be spent by the end of the year, which then created a shorter timeline for the county because they needed um, us to submit everything before the end of the year, so then they can do their due diligence up to the, to the federal government. But I know that they were hoping, hoping for an extension. So if that's a possibility, um, we could see more funding right away if that, if that did happen.
Right. Thank you.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I do have one more question about this project.
Councilmember Edgar.
You're bundling this with digital signage?
Yes.
Um, and that I'm assuming the signage is going to be outside?
No, so that, uh, the signage is, it's, uh, it's such a, um, it's confusing because it's not really signage. It, we also call it a carousel. We call it carousels. What it is, is basically signage that has software that works with it so that we can actually put messages on it from one location. Um, so that we're, if we're, uh, in, in the CPI department, we're putting up graphics. We're putting up messages about, you know, instructions about what people need to do, whatever it is, there's a consistent message running on all five of the monitors. They're basically like, they look like television screens. They're, they're what we call carousels because they rotate messages that we can program from another location. Is John Stillson still on the call, Mr. Stillson?
Yes, I'm still.
Would you please, uh, just confirm that I've just told the truth here because that was a very.
That's, that's exactly what it is. It's a, um, information system where, um, the, uh, Benny's office can, or CPI can, uh, program each monitor from one location at, uh, the four or five different locations that are, uh, there as well as the city's bulletin board system that works off the same computer system.
That probably wouldn't be reimbursable, correct?
We don't know.
COVID related.
Uh, I, I can respond to that. And like I said, I mean, you know, we're gonna do everything we can to get it reimbursed. I mean, I, I don't know that we can be considering that aspect of it as quickly as we are, um, if COVID hadn't come around.
And if I can add, actually, that portion, um, it's the carousel signage that we're already seeking reimbursement for, for the community center and library. And I had spoken with the county, um, prior to submitting that reimbursement request, and I did, I did so on the November thirtieth, which was the last day. And they indicated that they thought it would qualify. So we're still waiting for, to see if they will actually reimburse it. Um, but that's actually the part of this that's, that we're already seeking reimbursement for. And the justification behind it is that, A, it allows us to meet our goal of allowing, of providing our staff, um, more ways to do things remotely. So less footprint, uh, less footprint in the building. Um, but also trying to divert, um, face-to-face interaction. So the idea is the more things that people can see when they come in to pay a bill and the information that they see is on a, a sign and on a digital sign, and this gives us more possibilities for that, the less likely they are to come back up to the counter to ask certain questions, et cetera. So they did think it was reimbursable. We're waiting to see.
Madam Mayor?
Uh, yes.
Uh, I have a question and a comment. Uh, first, a question for, uh, John, if he's, if he's still on. Um, what do, do we have an estimate for what the lifespan of this new tech is going to be?
Yeah, the typically computer systems are five years. Um, they do last longer. The current one you have, um, I didn't install the original one. I think it's six or seven years old. Um, it's just to the point where the hardware can no longer be updated. So it's Windows seven right now. Windows seven has been, uh, discontinued and they no longer support it. And with that, um, new tech no longer, um, supplies updates for it anymore, or, um, they have no parts for anything. So, um, when Benny was trying to do, um, live streaming, it's some, something happened with the system where it, it stopped, uh, functioning and we couldn't get an update for it. So, and, uh, like I said, uh, new tech no longer supports that system because it is running Windows seven. And I'm sure, uh, Ricardo, um, the IT department would also want to get that system off the networks because it is susceptible to viruses because it's older.
Thank you. Um, I also just wanted to, just give a quick comment. Um, something that I think, uh, it's sort of an unintended consequence of COVID is that um, more residents have been able to participate in city council meetings because of the virtual element. And people who may not have been comfortable coming in or not available or physically able to come into a council meeting have been able to participate, um, and give comment and ask questions during meetings. And so I think that this new model is, is great moving forward because it increases accessibility for all residents even beyond the pandemic. So I think this is a great new technology and I'm glad we're taking advantage of it and hopefully getting reimbursed for some, if not perhaps most of it at some point.
Any further comments or questions? Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
And Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
And Mayor McClellan?
Yes, a motion passed.
Thank you.
One small question is the marquee talking about communications unrelated to this grant or whatever. Um, are we anywhere in fixing that? Or is it fixed? Is it going to be fixed?
Jocelyn, do you, do you want to take that? The good old marquee, the marquees, I should say. There are two of them.
I'm sorry, uh, City Manager Tungate, did you ask me if I'd like to take that question?
Yeah.
Um, I would. I'd love to answer it. Um, we're, we're in the process. There, we have some, some, uh, real heavy technical issues with this, but we are budgeted. We do have a budget for making the repair. Um, we just have not been, uh, able to do that yet. I'm going to also put one of my colleagues on the spot, uh, Director, uh, uh, Dave DeCosta, are you on the call?
I don't know if he is.
He must not be on the call. Okay, I'm working with him, working with him and with, uh, with, um, Director, um, Ricardo to, to get that taken care of. We were looking to have it, uh, taken care of by the end of the year. We're putting both of those, uh, signs on the same system. Right now they're on separate systems. And one of the systems is absolutely just not going to ever work. So we're gonna put them both on there. I'd say, give us another sixty days on that one and we'll have that up and running.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Um, let's see, where are we? Um, Clerk, did we vote?
We did.
We did. So we're set there. Um, that is, we are now on, uh, item fifteen, City Council. Um, we have, we need a resolution accepting the resignation of Councilmember Regina Weiss. Nobody wants her to.
Yes. Nobody's gonna make the motion, so, uh, let's just move on.
So moved.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. And a second?
Second.
Your, thank you. Um, uh, we have loved working with this competent woman for these years. Uh, you can depend on her. She is passionate. Um, committed to the community, available. Um, I just, I can't rave on enough. Uh, so what I will do is read this, uh, proclamation that we have prepared, um, to present to her virtually to that tonight. This is City of Oak Park, Mayor, Council and Administration in special re- recognition of Regina Weiss, who has served on the council from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty. The Mayor, Council and Administration of the City of Oak Park, Michigan, in testament and tribute to her distinguished public service and lasting contributions to the City of Oak Park and its residents, wish to express their sincere appreciation to Councilmember Regina Weiss. While confronting a range of community issues and unprecedented challenges, you were and always will be an ally and friend of the people of Oak Park. Your sustained commitment to civic participation and providing the best possible services to our citizens while continually seeking to improve their quality of life will always serve as a reminder to city employees and officials to put the people of Oak Park first. And, uh, this was, um, uh, as of December seventh, twenty twenty, signed by Marion McClellan, Mayor, Carolyn Burns, Mayor Pro Tem, Solomon Radner, Julie Edgar, Councilmembers and Eric Tungate, City Manager. So we are, um, virtually giving you this and you are virtually receiving it. Wasn't that slick? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Um.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am. Sir.
Um, before we, uh, vote on this motion, can I, uh, speak for a minute?
Please.
So as some people here know, when my good friend Ken Rich left, uh, I wrote a little poem and the mayor read it. Well, this time around, the mayor wrote a poem and asked me to read it. And here it is. Well, this is it. Time to bid our farewell to our friend Regina Weiss, whom we've gotten to know so well. Seems like just, seems like just yesterday she threw in her hat to run for city council and she won just like that. From day one at city hall, it quickly became clear that she had much more to offer and would soon disappear to DC or the White House or perhaps the UN. Well, okay, maybe not, or at least just not yet. Many people believe that politics is so lame and it helps if you have thick skin, a good heart and a brain. To do this job right takes more than, takes more time than you'd know. Not to mention it's thankless and it's rather stressful, but it's rewarding as well when you know you've done good for those whom you serve in your own neighborhood. Regina served with integrity, though for only three years, and her absence will be felt as she grows in her careers. It's a tough pill to swallow, but let's make some lemonade out of the lemons we've been thrown by her going away. Our governor will have an ally. Turns out a woman's place is in the house. Go get him, Regina. We know you'll make us proud.
Oh. Bravo, our own Dr. Seuss. Fabulous.
Um, and Madam Mayor, I want an autographed copy of that, please. Thank you so much and thank you, Councilmember Radner, for that inspired reading.
It was, it was Marion.
Oh, yes. Uh, of many talents. Any other comments or questions before we, um, uh, let's see. I moved to accept the resi- resolution.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, I'll, I'll give, I'll say more later at the end of the meeting, but I just had a quick question, uh, for our city attorney. Um, should I abstain from this vote? Like, can I vote to accept my own resignation?
I think you should abstain from this one.
Well, I'm voting no, so, uh, I don't know if there's gonna be enough votes to pass. We'll see what happens.
The, the, the charter requires, um, the remaining people to act upon it, so, um, I would guess that you should abstain.
Right, um, so, uh, do you want, uh, a roll call for this one?
No, not necessarily.
Um, all those in favor of accepting this resignation, please say aye.
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 O, same sign? We're all opposed, but.
Abstain.
Thank you. Motion carried. Uh, we wish you the very, very best in, in all your endeavors and we know that we can call on you as we always have and that you will, uh, be popping into council meetings to give updates.
Absolutely. You've not gotten rid of me.
Great. Um, uh, the next item is called to the audience.
Um, Madam Mayor, can I, I, I'm sorry, I thought we were doing one more item. No?
Oh, recognition.
Did that.
Separate one?
If I, could I?
Did that.
Oh, I'm, then I'm totally off here. May I just, may I say a few words?
Please.
Um, Councilmember Weiss, I, I just wanted to, I mean, a huge congratulations is in order because it, it's a well-deserved victory. And, um, as everyone has said, you are a true gem. And we are so lucky to have you. You know, a lot of people don't know you as well as I do and a lot of, a lot of people on council because we spend so much time together over the years. But above, I mean, you're smart, you're, you're hardworking, you're all of those things. But most importantly, you are as kind-hearted as they come. And it is, and just a true honor to have worked with you, worked for you. Um, and I speak on behalf of all of the folks in our administration because, um, I know you'll go on to do amazing things, um, because good things happen to good people. But not having you on council is, is going to be hard, but, um, we're in good hands in Lansing. Thank you for all. Thank you for all that you've done.
Any other comments before we close out? Being none, um, whoever is, is chosen has big shoes to fill. He is one of hearts. A call to the audience, is it Benny? Could be doing this or Crystal?
Director Vecchio.
Director Vecchio.
Good evening, everyone. This is a call to the audience. If anybody wishes to speak, please raise your hand in the participant list or message in the chat. It looks like, um, I see Kenneth Sherman would like to speak first and then I've got Cheryl Weiss so far.
I think it's cute that she asked for someone to speak and the dog spoke.
The hard actor follow. I have two, two questions. One is, I think for the DPW and one is for communications. So my first question is, a neighbor was on the list to have their sidewalk repaired. The city came out, put them on the sidewalk repair list a few weeks ago. The barricades were set up and then they were taken down and nothing was ever done. So my question is, is the sidewalk repair program still on or off for 2020? That's my first question. I don't know if anybody can answer that.
Madam Mayor, can, may I have Director Barrett contact him offline on that?
Yes. And your second question?
Is regarding the communication carousel that you talked a few minutes about? So my question is, um, the two marquees that are malfunctioning, how come they can't be made part of the other five carousels for messaging? And how are they different if they're going to be different between the five that you're going to be putting up versus the two that are, you know, outside? Can you clarify that?
Jocelyn, or I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, I can, I can clarify one aspect that, of that, but Jocelyn, I don't know if you want to weigh in too. But I will just say this, I think, here's the way that I look at city technology and nothing pains me more than having to change city technology. It seems like just yesterday we put all this new technology in and lo and behold, it was seven years ago because we moved into this building in 2013. But the reality of it is you can probably do anything you want. It's just how much do you want to pay? Unfortunately, one of the vendors for the City Hall marquee, I understand is no longer producing that technology. So we literally have to go out and purchase all new technology for that marquee at City Hall. And then we'd have to purchase the same technology at the 109 in Coolidge and then purchase a system to, uh, you know, create a segue into the carousel system. Um, and again, I'm not sure that is even possible, but I'm sure if you spend enough money, you could do it. I don't know, Jocelyn, if you want to.
Oh, City Manager Tungay, my apologies. Um, I would just add one other thing that the, the carousels we're talking about that are being the five locations inside the building do a little bit more than what we can even do with the outside marquees. Those will just scroll a message. These we can actually put graphics up. So very much like you see on channel 16, our OPTV 16, where we have graphic messages up that are like flyers and they give you information. We can do that. We can put up just messages that are words. There's just a lot we can do. And as Director Van Black was pointing out, it gives us another option of how we can give instruction to people who do visit City Hall and then minimize the amount of contact between staff and those visiting City Hall. So I think it's going to be much more, actually. The external signs are great. We need those for people driving by. When those who are walking into City or City Hall into the other municipal complex buildings, they can, we can use it for that as well to communicate with them upon their visit. Does that make sense to you, Mr. Sherman?
Thank you. Is there anyone else interested in speaking from the audience?
Um, we have Cheryl Weiss would like to speak.
Thank you. First of all, I just want to say wishing all the best to Regina Weiss and just to thank you for all you've done, for always listening and you will definitely be missed, but I know you're going to be great in Lansing. The next thing I wanted to bring up is not quite as easy and I really thought about this tonight, but it's been weighing on my heart for months and I need to say it. I've tried to bring this up at other meetings and either it wasn't understood or I was yelled at for bringing it up. But I need to. This is the ninth month of the pandemic. This is something none of us have ever experienced and it's been very difficult for everybody. Wherever you are, whatever your position, no matter how old you are, how young you are, whatever. It's been really, really hard. And this is the ninth month. This isn't new anymore. What I'm noticing, you guys know I run Oak Park neighbors. I'm in touch with the community. I get private messages almost every day from community members looking to me to help them with things. We used to be called the family city in Oak Park and we used to be the family city. I don't feel we are anymore and that hurts. We have people that are living alone, that are isolated, that are depressed. We have moms that are overwhelmed with trying to help their kids and somehow do their own jobs. We have seniors who desperately miss their family, their grandkids that are isolated in their apartments. And there is very little to nothing being done by the city to help that. Other cities have a number of things. They have crafts for free. They have bingo games. They have author visits. They have virtual concerts. They have Santa visit drive by and I'm not saying we should do the Santa Claus, but they have special events that are done virtually or drive by. We used to have in the summer, the public safety did a great job with birthday parties and I'm not saying that should continue. But we had something then that we now don't and there's been nothing to replace that. There's meditation classes online through other communities which are so needed right now. There is in one community, 12 days of recreation with ideas for something different to do every day, including getting active outside. They have the DIA Inside Out. They have Sticky Fingers Cooking Class for kids and for adults. Adult Book Club, Kids Book Club. A talk about the benefits of buying meat locally. Bullet Journals Cookbook Club. They have Shop Local. They have a big campaign in Berkeley and in Ferndale, which brings the businesses, the residents and the city together that we are one, where right now we're not. I tried to bring that up. I was told the businesses don't care. The businesses don't want to get involved. Maybe, I doubt it. I bet if we could get more customers, I bet they'd be interested. I have been here 52 years, my entire life. I'm disappointed. I said something similar before and you know what? I'm going to keep saying it every single council meeting until I see something different. All we have in December, the calendar of events. Winter property taxes levied, city council meeting, happy Hanukkah, curbside leaf collection and waste, yard waste ends, first day of winter, city council meeting, holiday closing, Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, city closing hours. In November, we had two events for children. Creating sock puppets and intro to crocheting for ages six to 12 only. I would have liked to learn how to crochet, but I'm not six to 12. Other people I know would have loved to do those kinds of things. And I'm going to just come out and say it. If we can spend $30,000 on a new communication system, I think you can give away some socks to make a sock puppet without spending 10 bucks. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your challenge. Thank you. Anyone else? There is, if there's no one else interested in speaking, we will do call to the council and then move to a closed session. Mayor Pro Tem Burns.
Well, um, I just wanted to say to Regina, you're going to be missed. Thank you for all your hard work and everything that you've done. And I know you're going to give the representatives a run for their money up there. If you need any inside information about how to navigate through the House, the budget, I'm here for you anytime you need me. Thank you and good luck. To all the residents of Oak Park, please continue to be safe. Thank you for your participation. Thank you for adhering to the COVID rules and guidelines so that we continue to be safe. I know there are people that do not wear their masks as they should. Please, that does not mean that it's right. Please continue to wear your masks and be conscious of your neighbors and the persons that you meet on your day to day travels. Although it may be very limited, there is still a pandemic going out here, going on out here and it is still very contagious. Thank you.
Thank you, well said, well said. Councilmember Edgar.
Also wanted to express my appreciation of outgoing City Councilmember Regina Weiss. Congratulations on your win. You're going to be great in Lansing. Give them hell. Um, and I'm sorry that you're leaving just as I'm starting because I was really learning from you and I hope that I can call on you on occasion to get some tips. Anyway, thank you to residents for joining us tonight. Good night.
Councilmember Radner?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to, uh, first of all, say thank you to Cheryl Weiss for, um, for speaking as you just did. You know, there are things that, uh, that I know a lot of people reach out to you and tell you and it's good to hear things coming from anybody in the city, but particularly from people who are, are coming to us with, uh, with issues that they know of that affect lots of people. So thank you for being here and even though sometimes it's not always nice to hear criticism, it is important to hear it. So thank you. As far as, uh, as far as our quitter goes, our quitter over here who's moving to Lansing, because she doesn't like Oak Park anymore. I want to wish you well, obviously. It's been, it's been really great working with you. What I've noticed, which I think is going to really help you in Lansing, is that, and I think this comes from your sincerity and from your integrity. But when you disagree with people, you still are able to get along with them. And I assure you, there are going to be people in Lansing that you're going to disagree with way more than you ever disagreed with any of us, with the exception of maybe my dear friend Ken Rich. But be prepared for that kind of disagreement. And as I was just saying, you always got along with everybody. You always were able to respectfully state where your position was and sometimes there were, there were negotiations that had to take place and you were always very good at that, at working with, uh, with everybody, whether they agreed with you or not. So obviously when you get to Lansing, I'm sure that's going to serve you very well. And I just wish you, uh, I wish you well. I wish you the best. Uh, it's been great working with you and hopefully this is not the last we're going to see of you.
Councilmember Weiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Councilmembers, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Burns. I will definitely be reaching out to you because I, I would love to pick your brain and I, there's so much I, I need to learn. And I'm, uh, am always willing and, and hopeful to get all of the support that I can and always, Councilmember Edgar and everyone else on council, if you ever need anything, please reach out to me always. And also to whoever you pick, and, and I apologize for putting you all through this process of selecting my replacement, but I know I have full confidence in this body to select an amazing person to represent the City of Oak Park for the remainder of my term. And, and beyond, if they choose to, to run again and are elected in 2021. Um, and I, whoever that person is, I just want them to know, um, that I'm here for them as well if they have questions or need support. I just want to, uh, address everyone here, uh, the mayor, uh, city manager, the rest of council, city staff, administration and all of our residents who are here tonight and who are listening. It has been an absolute honor, privilege and joy to serve the City of Oak Park. This city council and administration under the leadership of our wonderful mayor and city manager have made it easy for me to serve the city under a common shared vision for strengthening and improving Oak Park and providing the highest quality services to our residents. I'm incredibly grateful to the residents in particular of the City of Oak Park for their support and outstanding civic engagement. I have truly enjoyed serving with so many residents, including many, many who are here on this call tonight and different boards and commissions and other community groups. Oak Park residents are simply the best and make our community stronger, safer and a happier place. And so thank you to everyone who's on watching and listening tonight. I'm going to sincerely miss serving with this body, but rest assured that I'm going to still be around to bother you all in my new role. I look forward to representing Oak Park and the rest of the 27th House District in Lansing and know that I'm always here for you and for all of our residents. Representative Robert Winberg has done an amazing, outstanding job representing our district and has some very big shoes to fill. And I look forward to continuing the extraordinary legacy of leadership in the House District, um, in this House District, 27th House District. And I want to just thank you again for the opportunity to serve on this council. It has been an experience, an experience that I will always cherish. Thank you, everyone, and be well.
Thank you. Virtual hugs from all of us. I can't add to what has already been said, but just, uh, want to remind everyone that even though we've got fabulous news about the vaccines becoming available, when Dr. Fauci was asked, when can we throw our masks away and have a mask burning party? He said next December. So even though the end is in sight, we're not there yet and we're in a huge increase and Christmas is coming.